Have we, are we at, we at capacity? We might be at capacity. I think it's full. Pretty full. Are we good, Kate?
Yep.
Time, okay, we'll go ahead and call the town meeting to order. And we need to elect a moderator, so we'll take nominations from the floor. Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations. And all those in favor? I opposed, so moved. Thank you for the honor of being the moderator. Okay, so eligibility to vote at a town meeting, any person who was an elector of such town and any citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or separately who is liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grand list of such town, reference Connecticut general statute, section seven dash six. Kate, could you read the legal notice?
Special needs in the electoral support was qualified to vote in town meetings for the town of Berlin. It will be held at the Berlin Town Hall, come for changes two forty ten Road, Berlin, Connecticut on Tuesday, January twenty third, twenty twenty four, at six forty five p.m. to the following purpose. We approve a non-budget appropriation of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars in the unappropriated fund balance to the grant match account for the purposes of providing matching funds and funds for preparation of grant application stated at Berlin, Connecticut on September day of January twenty twenty fourth.
Thank you, Kate. So, is there a resolution now to come before the town meeting?
To approve a non-budget appropriation of one hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars on the unappropriated fund balance to the grant match account for the purposes of providing matching funding and funds for preparation of grant application.
There's a second on that? Thank you. So now we have a discussion on the resolution. Anything just to, tell us in just a couple minutes and?
Yes, so, just a clarification, at the last meeting, we had four items. One was the twenty-five thousand dollar grant match for the aquatic invasive species. Second one was for the seventy-five thousand dollars for the preparation of the sidewalk planes for the connectivity. And the third one was the fifty thousand dollars for the Steel Boulevard for the bomb field remediation. There's another one, thirty-three thousand, three, three, three for the rice grant. And we're taking that out because we found another way to fund it.
Yeah.
And that's on the second item on the agenda.
Okay, right, yeah.
So, rather than one eighty-three, it drops to one hundred and fifty thousand in total, but when we scheduled the meeting, it was already.
Oh.
We had to stick to that language.
Oh, okay, but we won't be?
You'll be appropriating only the one fifty.
Oh.
We get to that agenda item later.
Okay, yeah, that's good, that's better, yeah, that's right, I saw that there. Okay, any other discussion on this? Yes, yes, sir. Yes, please. How are we doing?
How are you?
Good.
Is the one eighty-three on, one hundred and eighty-three thousand the only item on, for the town meeting, or are you gonna have the the other, the other two issues as far as what it's gonna be used for?
No, this is the only one.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, yeah. Why?
I'm, I'm opposed to the transfer because buried in it is included twenty-five thousand dollars to be a town fund, town contribution for a state grant for Silver Lake.
Is that, is that in this one?
Aquatic invasive species.
That's Silver Lake.
Yes, I can, I'm sorry, Kate. Len Zalinski, twenty-four, Wine Sap Road. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Silver Lake is a state-owned lake. State tried getting Berlin to take, take it over maybe seven, eight, nine years ago. Berlin had, they did a study at the time and declined. Right now, Silver Lake is about a hundred and forty-six acres. About a hundred, only a hundred and twenty-five of it belong within Berlin's borders, still being a state-owned facility. Compare that with our Paper Goods Pond, which is about sixteen acres. And Railroad Pond, which is about twelve acres. Think, uh, we've got enough issues with the, our ponds in town without having to get involved with the state to try to get a grant for cleaning up this Silver Lake. Uh, I don't know how many residents are butters to the lake. I don't, I have not seen the, the agenda item for that, that's on your agenda itself for, for this particular item, doesn't identify the number of butters, both in Meriden and in Berlin. Doesn't identify anything as far as where the predominance of the invasive species be, are. Uh, the thing that, in, in my experience with the Park and Rec Commission is that if we get involved with the state and a grant, what happens in the future when the species starts to regrow? Are we then gonna, is the state gonna then say, hey, Berlin, you did it this time, do it again? I think there's, there's just too much liability here, I'm against it, thank you.
Well, thank you, you bring up a good point. What do we, what do we think about this? Do we, do we even, I mean, it is state, I mean, most, right, what, what was the, the size again? I mean, it's total, and, and how many was in Berlin? I mean, shouldn't the state be responsible for that?
Well.
How about it, like, how do we?
Jim has some history.
Okay, yeah.
Only I can ask him to speak on. So this is a matching grant, right?
Yeah.
Hundred thousand from the state, I don't think the state has been very responsive in the past, but these are Berlin residents who are complaining about it.
Yeah.
So, Jim, do you want to add anything, please?
Sure, it's, you know, we, we did get a number of complaints from the Berlin residents, you know, there's a number of subdivisions down there, Worthington Point Road, Whitney Point Road, et cetera. It's, you know, there, there is an invasive species problem, we had public rounds, did a, an assessment. There's Eurasian mill foil and also water chestnut. And you remember what happened with water chestnut at Paper Goods Pond and Railroad Pond? And there's kind of a minor, minor amount down at Silver Lake now. So with respect to the water chestnut, we would be hand pulling it and, you know, hopefully keep it under control that way. Have talked to the neighbors down there, they're, they're interested in kind of forming a citizen group to monitor the situation. Obviously, we've been in contact with, with the E P, we'd asked them to consider funding it. And, you know, they had, they have not provided funding for it. There's a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of state lakes that, you know, are municipalities that have invasive species, that's the way it is in Connecticut these days. And also this, you know, again, this is a very competitive grant program anyway, five hundred thousand dollars statewide. I think we're trying to respond to the concerns that were expressed by the citizens, actually through the Parks and Rec Commission. As far as where the invasive species are, once it's in the lake, it's in the lake. So, this all, you know, it migrates around, obviously, like with Eurasian mill foil, which is one of the species. It, it comes in on the boats and gets in the lake and becomes a problem. So, we're trying to address this, if with the, if the, if the council supports it, we'll submit the application, hope for the best. We did contact Meriden, asked them to participate in this, haven't gotten a response yet, but we can, we will continue to pursue that.
Okay, thanks, Jim, for that. Jeff, what it like, so we take responsibility now, what, what, what happens if it's a state-owned lake later? I mean, what, just, we don't have, there's, we're not tied to anything, obviously, if we?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't permanently change anything.
No. Yeah. Okay. What do we, yeah?
Do we have the authority to maintain a state facility? Then under our permission?
Typically, no.
Well, there's a question, yeah, that's the question, kinda, yeah, right?
I understand invasive species is a problem.
Yeah.
But is it our job and is it even our rights to go and do it?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe that, you know, that, obviously, if the state gives us the grant, we're, they're gonna provide us permission to do the treatment. And we've had, you know, we have had dialogue with, with, with staff at the E P, so I don't expect that would be an issue if we get the grant, but the grant will be very competitive.
Yeah, what, yeah.
Except part of this is in Meriden as well, and we haven't heard back from them in terms of them wanting to participate in this cleanup.
Correct.
How long ago did you reach out to them?
Uh, you know, I've been talking to them in the last couple of weeks.
You know, how many, I know the larger piece is on Berlin property, but, you know, are we talking about ten homes, twenty homes, you know, that might be on the lake that's on the Meriden, Meriden section?
There's, there's homes and there's also, there's businesses, including Kuhn, which provides, you know, services, employment services to, you know, persons with, you know, ability challenges and such. And they're right on the lake, actually, spoke with them today and, and they, they have, they happen to do a fundraiser where they have kind of kayak and canoe races on the lake as, as a fundraiser for the organization. So there, there are both businesses and residences on the lake in Meriden, but there's more, you know, that are in the proximity in Berlin. And we do have some trails, trail access at a couple of points from the Berlin subdivisions in, to the lake. You know, again, my, the residents tell me it's actively used for fishing and, and boating. You can see from the photos that they've sent me that, obviously, though, you know, when, when the, when the weeds are in, it's not as inviting a place as, as in the off-seasons when it's not, when they're not.
One, one last question, Jim, is this one of the ones that has to be submitted by the end of January? Or can we chase Meriden a little bit and inquire as to whether or not, since it's not owned by the town of Berlin, if we can do something? I mean, I know deep says, but deep says lots of things, so, I mean, I'm all for cleaning it up, but I just want to make sure that we're not rushing into something that could potentially be a headache for us.
Yeah, this is the one that's the January twenty, thirty-first deadline, and it was announced on December fifteenth, so this is the timeline we're faced with.
What are we matching, what are we kicking in?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and what do we get, a hundred?
Seventy-five.
I mean, seventy-five, a hundred, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be nice if Meriden could join us. I know.
You know, have time to reach out to Meriden. After all, they are enjoying some of the benefits of having that lake in Meriden. Why should it only be us?
But it's one for, one hundred and forty-five versus, what's the total? Acreage, we had a large. So we are. One forty-five for us. Yeah. I don't know, either. What do we all think, I mean, it's not a ton of money, yes, please, yeah.
I think I agree with Jim that, you know, not, not owning the lake or not being, you know, under the jurisdiction of the town of Berlin, if they're gonna fund a grant, it doesn't really make much sense to then give us a grant and then not allow us to do it, I guess we just give that the money, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it doesn't seem like that should borrow the way.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, yeah, why would they give us the money and then tell us we can't do it, but that's, no, no. But it is the state of Connecticut, but, but, yeah, I doubt, I doubt it. So, I don't know, I don't, yeah, Charlie, I don't.
This approval would be to put the
The twenty.
The twenty-five thousand in the account to make it available if we decide to go forward. Right, we're not.
Well, we're basically deciding to go forward.
Well, the, the second item on the agenda.
Later on the agenda.
Is for us to asking you to approve, for us to apply for the grant.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure, Jim, at some point, the apply, and if they give us the money, he could say, no, we changed our mind.
Right.
Right.
Of course not.
Yeah, can do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Sure, there'd be a lot of other people in line, they'd be happy to get it.
Yeah.
If we say no.
Yeah, I think so. So.
Give us more time to work with Meriden, too, I mean, again, it's, it's like, what, eighty, ninety percent of the, of the, of the lake is in Berlin, but.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Makes sense, folks, so what we're gonna vote on in any way now, so take a vote. Uh, we have our resolution, so all those in favor? I opposed. All right, so moved, passes and we'll pass it on to our agenda. And our meeting is now adjourned, thank you all. We got, well, I guess we didn't, we're almost time for our meeting.
Yeah.
That's okay, it was a good discussion, it's good.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's too much, how you doing?
Yeah, so is.
All right, yeah. Yeah, I remember that. This date, uh. No. I gotta say, no. It's different.
Does a good job, though.
Yeah.
Much better, you know.
Yeah, okay. Yes. I don't think so.
I don't think, I think only if you go.
I just forgot a lot of folks around it. Oh, yeah.
Well, it'd be, it'd be stronger for the state, that's true. Right, two towns coming in, I'm married to join us.
I don't know, I clearly was not.
Made the state dredge it.
Okay, yeah, that's right, yeah.
But.
But, yeah, I know, they're, you know, they're not, that's. Daily Pat, yeah. Did he, did he, he was okay with it after?
Oh, yeah.
That works up, yeah. Okay. So are we, we're good now, right? Yes, we should move along, huh? Yeah. Okay, we'll call our town council meeting to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Kate.
Here. Here. Mayor Kozenski.
Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Rosen.
Here.
So Russell.
Here.
Councilor Beach.
Here.
There you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to our audience of citizens now. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak to us, now would be the time on anything pertaining to Berlin, whether it's on our agenda or not, we're happy to hear, hear you. So, anyone here? Anyone online? Anyone on Zoom? Nobody, okay, well, we don't hear anyone, so we'll go ahead and close that. Uh, on to the mayor's update, just the two, two, three quick things, so, two meetings, folks. We're looking to do, we've done it before, a joint meeting with the Board of Ed, I talked to Julia today. So the Board of Ed, the Town Council and the Board of Finance, so two dates were thrown out there, we'd meet downstairs in the Board of Ed room. This coming Monday, the twenty-ninth, or the next Monday is the fifth, I believe. So those are just two dates we were talking about, doesn't have to be those dates, Thursdays didn't work. We, so, Monday or Wednesday were the dates we sort of, the days of the week that Julia thought would work best for some of her folks, too. I gotta, I haven't talked to the Board of Finance yet, but the twenty-ninth, maybe that's a bit soon for people to plan, I don't know, or, or, or the fifth. Or another day if they don't work.
Yeah, but time, what time?
Six o'clock, so we're looking for six o'clock. We just talk about general issues before the budget, you know, just to get everybody's points out there, with whatever they, whatever they want to say to each other, and, you know, maybe, maybe we actually come to some formal agreement. It's a positive, no, I'm hoping. But what are we thinking, that those dates work? It's the twenty-ninth and the, and the fifth. So this coming Monday or the fifth is the next Monday? Because they want to do it before their, I think their budget meeting is February twelfth.
Yes, their Board of Ed, their Board is twelfth.
Twelfth.
Because the Elks is gonna be presenting some awards at that night.
Oh, yeah, they do the award stuff, too, yeah.
So the Elks are gonna be there that night.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we want to do it before then, we, you know, we just, again, it's, it's an, I mean, it's a, you know, official meeting, but it's informal to, to talk to each other. We've done, we've done it a couple times now, I think, which is a good thing.
I mean, I would prefer the fifth.
The fifth, okay.
If I'm gonna be the first one.
Yes, good, well, that's good, somebody's gotta start, appreciate you starting.
Fifth works for me too.
It works, fifth?
Yep.
Fifth, what are you thinking, or was that, was that good, or no? No, no.
The second, the third, the fourth, that whole week is shot, it's all right.
Oh.
Whatever you want to do, we'll make it happen.
Well, let's, well, so we still gotta check with, we'll see with the Board of Ed, and we gotta, I'll talk to the Board of Finance. Okay, so let's, we'll, we'll do the fifth at six o'clock for now, if for some reason it changes, maybe that week. Would a Wednesday work that week, just if for some reason the fifth doesn't work?
Yeah.
That was another day we threw out, the seventh?
That Wednesday, that Wednesday, the seventh, Mr. Mayor, I'm out of town.
Okay, so we're gonna push for this fifth, let's push for that day, the fifth. February fifth, so, all right, thank you for that. Yes, I will let you know, I'm gonna, she's gonna talk to her folks and tomorrow or Thursday, we should be able to confirm that, I hope, and we could get, I could tell, Arroche could put something out. I'll talk to, I gotta talk to the Board of Finance, too.
You can reach out to Sal.
All right, yeah, I'll talk, yeah, I'll call Sal, just say if that works for them. So that's that meeting, there's another meeting we wanted to do, this is like an informal one, I, I guess I want to call it a workshop with the, just the, the Town Council and the Board of Finance. Just to talk about, it's really coming down to the police station, there seems to be a deadlock there for now, I don't know if they're through discussion, through discussing it, I, I, they may or may not be, I'm not clear on that, but I wasn't at the, the meeting where they were talking about it, but the, the last plan that we were talking about was renovating the police station, what is like three million dollars or so, we had the grant from the state. We have another million where we're gonna take on a surplus, so the suggestion from the Board of Finance, some of the members, three of the members, was that we take the other million out, too, because we have that money in surplus, don't bond anything for the renovation on the police station. We have, we have the money, I don't, you know, it's not a lot to bond, but why bond it if we have it? We obviously have other bonding that we're interested in doing, the two HVAC projects, I know we're looking for a grant to match forty percent of that, but so, we're just thinking maybe we could talk, again, it's informal, it's not under the charter or anything, it's just a discussion to kind of get everybody to have their opinions on whatever side that is, you know, as far as bonded or take the surplus out. And perhaps for that meeting, Arroche, we could get a comparison, just if we borrow the money, I don't know what the interest rates are now, they're typically fairly high versus the million dollars, I guess, sitting in our savings account. Getting whatever we're getting on that, you know, just to kind of have some kind of, I mean, it's not a lot of money to bond, but if we don't need to bond it, I don't, I'm not sure why we would, but just hear what their thoughts are, some of the, some of the members of the Board of Finance and what we all think, is that okay? And formal, it shouldn't, I don't think it'll take that long. We have to get a date for, I have no idea for the date for that, but I could talk to the Board of Finance and next week, is that good for folks, and like later in the week or something? Next week is what I'm thinking, because we don't have, you know, our meeting next week. We could, what, what's like a better night for, like, there's Thursdays, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights work, anybody have a, a big preference? Next week, next week, I'm thinking. Yeah, 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 something, well, not Friday, I don't want to do Friday, but.
So the end of the month is usually the absolute busiest day of the month.
Okay, yeah.
So if we could avoid the thirty-first.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it very much.
We can do that, we can avoid. Okay, well, that's, there's two good, two good reasons.
Andrew and I are coming from the same place.
Yeah.
For the first.
You, you wanna, you wanna shoot for that February first?
For the first, yeah, I think that'd be a good day.
Fine.
What are we thinking, Donna, Charlie?
Six o'clock again?
Yeah, it'd be six, yeah, probably here or downstairs, or where, downstairs? If it's a bit.
And the Doc Mac.
That's too small, can we do the Board of Ed room if no one's in it?
Board of Ed.
Everybody kind of fits.
One group will be sitting there and the other one.
Yeah, 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 we don't, we don't want that, yeah, someone will be upset. Someone will be upset, but if, if the, the first works, no?
Yep.
That works.
I might have a special session.
Oh, right, you said that, you said that.
I don't know, that'll look familiar, but, and I won't know, I just been told the whole day.
Okay, okay, well, let me, well, let's talk. All right, we'll talk about that day, I'll, I'll talk to, I, I even, even talked to the Board of Finance, honestly, so I, I need to see what they're, even, you know, I assume, I think they want to do it, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'll talk to Sal while I'm talking about the other meeting, I'll talk about this one. And we'll see, all right, does that make sense?
Thank you.
We'll, we'll try what we can do, yeah, thank you, folks, I appreciate that. And just one thing, Arroche, I just wanted to mention, speaking of the lake there, that, did we ever, you know, that, remember that guy wrote in on the Silver Island Association where they took a whole bunch of, he, he said they, yeah, destroyed a bunch of the conservation area, and that, that's the home, yeah. Did we ever get, did, did we ever figure that out?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission met the last meeting, they took it up.
Oh, good.
There were some action items that they were rolling out, I don't know what happened to it, I can follow up.
Okay, just, yeah.
Was in the meeting.
Let us know, next meeting, just curious. Okay, or, or email, I'll see, whatever.
I'm tired of misery, but did you want to set an ordinance committee meeting?
We, we, yeah.
Already set up.
The, uh, what's the next meeting, the fifth? The fifth? Is that the next meeting, no, that's, no, that's the other, I'm sorry, I got the, the ninth, wait, that's six.
Before the council meeting.
Before the council meeting, yes.
I think it's the Tuesday.
Yes, the sixth, right? Yes.
You stood the sixth at the.
Yeah, that's six, six o'clock, the ordinance committee, yeah. That was for the noise ordinance, there was two things on that, right, the noise.
Or no pension ordinance.
Oh, yes, the pension ordinance for the, yes, for the police pension, yes. All right, is that good?
Yep.
Pretty good, isn't it? Okay. But, yeah.
I'll talk about it later.
Yeah, it's, oh, okay, and you're.
It is fine.
Okay, so, yeah, just let us know what happens, what happened with the Conservation Commission on that.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm curious, too, because okay, so that's enough of that, we're all set on that, so we'll go get to our consent agenda, here we have nine, nine items on the consent agenda. We've all reviewed this before, just real quick for the record. First topic, accepting monetary donations totaling seventeen hundred, nine dollars, seven cents, deposit some of it into the Friends for the Library, it's different, so different parts of the library budget with that amount. We have number two. Approve the Lisa Dossino A L S Alliance to charge registration fee of twenty dollars for their Dan the Man five K run walk for the A L S that will take place on Saturday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Pistol Creek Trails. Number three, approve Berlin Little League to be able to sell food, beverages, ice cream, candy, merchandise for the twenty twenty-four baseball season at Pettit, Dennehy and Cincerelli. Number three, approve Berlin Little League to be able to sell food, beverages, ice cream, candy, merchandise for the 2024 baseball season at Pettit, Dennehy and Cincerelli Fields. Four, appropriate $6,860 sale of land, labor and materials revenue account to the Sage Improvement Account on the Capital Nonrecurring Fund. That's from Public Grounds. Accept donations to the Berlin Animal Control Donation Account for $80 for animal care and supplies valued at $535. Number six, approve the transfer of $6,600 from the Assessors Contractual Services Account to the Assessors Supplies Account. Both in the General Fund for the purchase of office furniture pending approval by the Board of Finance. Number seven, approve waiving the police fees in the approximate amount of $400 for the McGee Middle School Talent Show. Eight, approve waiving the police fees in the amount of $3,108 for Boxes to Boots Event. Giving Thanks to Our Troops Event took place on November 18th, 2023, and accepted grant in the amount of $450 and deposit the funds into the Operating Materials Account of the Fire Marshal for the purchase of portable light tower to be utilized as scene, as scene lighting investigations. Those are our nine consent agenda items. Any questions from anyone on those items? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
What is number four for? The 6860, I just can't tell from the.
Number four, appropriate $6,860 for sale of land to the Sage Improvement Account and the nonrecurring, so.
We're re-improving. Just curious.
That's a good question. Do we have any more on that?
You got to take it out of.
Oh, you have to take it.
Out of consent.
You can vote for your consent.
Yes.
1, 2, 3, and then 5 through 9.
Oh, we got to take it out to talk about it, right? Yes, we'll take it out. So.
We're taking out 4?
4, yeah, we could, then we could ask and get the answer.
I remove, I move, we remove item number 4 from the consent agenda.
That's all right, and then just vote on the rest of them, so 1 through 3, and.
That is, that is, before we do that, that, if we, maybe if, if you look at the, so, we have Town of Berlin selling surplus items online, public surplus.
Have a discussion about a consent item.
Ah, we can't, okay, all right.
That's the idea of consent, it's that it's a vote, one vote.
We'll take it out, but if you read it, it is there.
I move we approve.
Take it out.
Consent agenda, the items 1 through 3 and.
We've talked about consent after 4, by the way. I'm pretty sure we have, but that's all right. So, it's, we'll take it out, second on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So moved, and we'll go ahead and talk about it as the first item of new business. Okay, so, the rest of the items, what are we thinking? Good? We have a motion, do we have a motion yet, Charlie?
Yep.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, so moved. So, now we can talk about new business, right? Which is our consent item number 4. So, yeah, it looks like Kate, it's there, right? About what, but sure you could fill us in some more, Woody? I'm sure you have plenty of details for us.
Yes, currently, we had two pieces of equipment, a case roller and a Ford tractor. I believe the Ford tractor dates back to like 1983. We put them on the auction website, we ended up with $6,800. What we like to do is take that money and put it into the Sage Improvement Accounts, so we can improve the fields all around town with that money. A lot of that equipment is used for maintenance of the fields. So, this way, this, we can put it back into it, like, we bought tarps for Sage 1, Girls' varsity softball field, Zip-a-Deli, and different projects like that. Our goal is to grow the account, to probably try to do a bigger project, like maybe rebuild the South Gold of Sage Auxiliary.
Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Good, yeah, thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so, if there's no other questions, we go ahead and take a motion on that?
I move we approve item number 4 from the consent agenda.
Thank you, second on that? Thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so moved. Okay, new business.
Right, thank you. First item on the agenda is to approve an unbudgeted appropriation of $150,000 from the unappropriated fund balance of the account, the grant match account. These are the items that we discussed in the town meeting. And, as I mentioned, we are moving forward, oh, with only three items.
Right, right, yeah, this is how many discussion we just had. Any other comments or questions? We did discuss it previously tonight. Any questions, comments? Yeah. Yeah.
Going to go through the motions.
Yeah.
I certainly think that we should reach out to them.
You got to get your, you know what? My mic's not on.
I'm certainly supporting this, Jim, and I know that you're going to reach back out to Mary and grant.
I will.
Thank you.
Anything else? Are you guys good?
That, that grant is supposed to be in by the 31st of January, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Clock is ticking.
Yeah, so we're short on time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve a non-budgeted appropriation of $150,000 from the fiscal year 24 General Fund. Unassigned fund balance to the DEP Silver Lake $25,000 Community Connectivity Grant, $75,000, and Farmington Avenue Non-Grant $50,000 accounts. For the purpose of providing matching funds and funds for the preparation of grant applications and to refer this action to the Board of Finance.
Second thought.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so moved. For 2.
Thank you, agenda item number 2, this is the one that I mentioned before. Jim, in his conversations with the PD, they were able to find some money that can be used for the RACE Grant. And, obviously, we are asking $33,333 to use that for a $2 million grant. So, Jim, do you want to give a quick recap on that, please?
Yes, actually, they're, they're bumping up to 2 and 1/2 million, but they're keeping our, keeping our match at, at the $33,333. And again, this is to look at particularly pedestrian safety along the whole Berlin Turnpike Corridor. Possibly, you know, concepts for sidewalks, multi-use trails, things of that nature, considerations at intersections and things of, things of that type. So, CROG is leading the grant. They're doing the grant application, we're, we're providing support. Again, the traffic officer, Obolik, is, is involved in the planning team, as Chris, Chris and I, and tying Mike in. So, this is an opportunity for us to look at the, at the whole corridor. And hopefully, this will, this grant project will create information that we can use to, to apply for our future implementation grants to accomplish some of these projects.
Okay, and so, this is out of the PD, what is it, their grant overtime account? So.
Their grant match.
Going to run out of overtime this year? Are we good? I know they're burning a lot of overtime lately, I think, but chief? Chief, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. That's out of the money that would be used for matching grants, but we don't have any grants right now in the works. And we won't until after the new year, so, or the new fiscal, fiscal year.
Okay, so, it's not going to impact your operations anymore?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay, good. So, I wanted to make sure. Any other questions, comments? We good? We good? All right, thank you. All right, so, we take a motion, Charlie?
Move to authorize the town manager to take actions necessary for the town to collaborate with CROG and the towns of Newington and Weathersfield to submit a RACE Program Grant Application to the U.S. Department of Transportation to study pedestrian safety and mobility improvements along the Berlin Turnpike Corridor. And to transfer $33,333 in the Police Department Grant Overtime Account to the RACE Grant Account to provide Berlin's projected share of the grant match.
Second on that?
Second thought.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number 3, we keep coming back to this one.
Can't escape this one somehow.
Aquatic invasive species, just want to make sure you want us to do this. We're drowning in the lake. To actually apply for the grant itself. Previous one was to allocate the money. So.
I think we beat this to death tonight. I, I think we pretty much have.
Take a motion.
Yeah, I think we can do the motion. Unless anyone wants to talk some more about it, no, we're just, let's, let's do the motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to apply for a Control of Aquatic Invasive Species Grant and authorize the use of $25,000 from the Silver Lake Grant Match Account for this purpose pending approval of the non-budgeted appropriation by the Board of Finance.
Second on that?
Second thought.
Thank you, hearing no other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, agenda item number 4 is a bid waiver for S L R International Annual Stormwater Reporting. Mike is available to give you a quick recap on that. Mike?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, S L R, when they were known as Malone and McBroom, actually did the, the initial stormwater management plan. Excuse me, ever since then, they've been doing the annual report. Because S L R did our construction engineering inspections for the three-road paving project, Christian Deming and Porter's Pass, we're way over their threshold for POs. So, we, I have to come here and ask for the annual update fee of $3,500 to do this annual management report to, to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any questions on this one? Seen this before, right?
Yep.
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to waive the bidding requirements and issue a purchase order to S L R International of Glastonbury, Connecticut for $3,500 for state mandated annual stormwater reporting, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second thought.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Agenda item number 5 is to purchase five vehicles listed below from Tasker Ford, utilizing the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract, you recall, from the excess sales tax revenue. We had a town meeting appropriated the funds. There were seven vehicles identified. Jim actually got the actual prices, pretty much the same with me submitted, with a little difference. But now we're asking your approval to actually go ahead and purchase these vehicles.
Okay. Yeah, these are the ones we already looked at, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
How many years young will our fleet be after this?
From 13.2 to, I don't know, you can probably drop it close to 12 points.
Just 12 point something.
So exciting.
What a deal, what a deal.
We got a lot more hundred-something.
Does it go up when we buy these new ones now? It should go down, it should go down, yeah.
That's the way it works.
Five out of 150, you do the math.
Okay, well, it's a start.
It's a start.
It's a start. We got to start.
We have plans.
The right direction.
Yeah, you got to start somewhere, right? Yeah, it is going the right way, for now.
They maintain them so well.
Well, that's the thing, Jim does such a good job, this is what happens, you know? We have older vehicles, because they take care of them. Maybe you shouldn't fix it, now, no, we're not going there either. We appreciate what you do to keep them on the road. All right, so, we, we've talked about this, so, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of five vehicles, one trade van, one rack body, two dump trucks and a utility truck from Tasker Ford, utilizing the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract. Number 19PSX0161, an amount not to exceed $441,123.
Second?
I will second that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? If not?
Just one question from there.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the timeline for the delivery of the trucks once you order them? That's the way trucks have been the last year or a year and a half.
It's getting better.
Et cetera, more amount of time.
Gets better?
It is.
Good.
So, they used to be a year, year and a half, we're now down to about 90 days on them.
Really?
Really, that quick?
Chassis to be delivered, that's chassis to be delivered. And the body, last, last time, the body plant, they were six weeks out before they scheduled any.
Well, four, four, four and a half months.
Yeah, I'm hoping, man.
You could get electric ones faster, I hope.
Yeah, you can get a bunch of electric.
Thank you.
That's just, we're keeping the money low.
Smart.
Yeah.
Rhode Island.
That's good. Okay, I'm sorry, we, we were talking about the new truck place and the new Tasker Truck Dealer in town there with it. That's amazing, he's got a lot of trucks over there, huh? It's nice that they located that in Berlin.
They made a huge investment in that truck.
They did, yeah, because it was, was that the first one on the East Coast? Did he tell us at the ribbon cutting? What did he tell us?
I wish one in Connecticut.
Connecticut, okay, yeah, for the truck, the truck part, yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay. Motion, do we did, we did the motion, right? We had the question, we did the motion, we had the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 6 is the update on review of community center alternatives, scope of work. This is, council asked the, Jen, you're going to do this? Just so that benefit of the two new council members, we, the council asked the Parks and Rec Commission and the Commission of the Aging, look at the senior center, community center statement of need and come up with a review.
Right.
The council also approved for us to move forward with hiring an architect, who's right here, Ryan Humes, Jacklinsky Humes, from our town's on-call list. And together, Brian has put together a scope of work that is attached to your agenda. And the purpose of this meeting is to make sure the council, the people who are working on it, the architect, and everybody else gets on the same page before we go too further along the process. Add anything else to?
No, I mean, I think you covered it.
He's got it.
Took the stress off me. We have had two meetings with Brian, and the meetings have been myself, Tina Doyle, who's the Senior Center Director, Debbie Dennis, Superintendent of Recreation, and Donna Bovee, Chair of Parks and Rec, and Barbara Gombutz, Chair of Commission for the Aging. We've had two meetings with Brian so far, we have two more scheduled right now, we've been pretty productive. But last meeting, we did go over the scope as a group, so we are all on the same page. We're all, all okay with everything that's written, I think, like Roche said, we just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. And Brian is here, if we have any questions that I can't answer.
So, that is a different architect that originally did the one for 70,000 square feet.
Yeah. So, that, that's good, we're moving forward, so.
Well, go ahead. Would it help if Brian just quickly outlined?
Yeah.
What, what he thinks you want him to do?
Yeah.
Then you can.
Sure, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Then we can figure it out.
But we can summarize it for you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Brian.
My pleasure.
Jen, you got off easy, what happened? You got off real easy. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Brian Humes, Jacklinsky Humes Architects, Berlin, Connecticut. And I was pleased to be asked to be part of this. Answer the question that was recently asked is, no, I was not part of the earlier efforts on this project. So, this is a new assignment for me. And when it was presented to me, I was encouraged that the conversation can continue. And we're just a part of the conversation. And the conversation that I've been asked to have is with Commission on Aging and Parks and Rec. I'm up with a revised statement of need. That is the primary document that I'm going to be producing. In order to produce that, I need to have meetings and conversations with the subcommittee that's been established. I have to research the work that's been done in the past. And so initially, it's project research and analysis, just understanding what was done in the past. Researching it to only understand and inform my conversations. The primary document will be a space needs assessment. Space needs assessment, the information that I get from the subcommittee will define the needs of a community senior center. I'm not asking them square footage questions. I'm asking them, what are the programmatic functions that they want to perform? If a new building was constructed. We also have to get down to, is it a want or a need? Once we determine what they say are the stated needs. We can question those needs, and the subcommittee will have to endorse a final product. The final product would then have me put square footage estimates on the program spaces. I don't not, I don't go in and ask them, how big of an office do you need? I go in and ask, do you need an office? And what do you need to do in the office? Once they describe their function requirements of each space, it's up to me to put a square footage on it. In the end, you'll have a document that shows programmatic needs, required functions within each space. And a square footage estimate. That's the revised statement of need that I'm going to deliver. But we've also been asked to do other options to support the statement of need. Once this document's developed, we'll have an understanding of size and components for program space. But there could be alternative approaches within the town to satisfy that document. Alternative approaches could be phasing project. It could be using multiple buildings within town or multiple sites within town. To satisfy this statement of need. Doesn't necessarily all have to be one building, one location. We've also asked to provide a timeline of how soon this project could go forward if it was to go forward. But within my, my study, which is all going to be an hourly not to exceed. We have not been asked to do any floor plans, but we're not, we're not drawing or designing anything. We're going to give you first document, which is eight and a half by 11. Which is going to give you size. We're also going to give you alternatives on how that size can be accommodated. To understand the alternatives, we also have to understand the functional requirements of the other buildings in town. Such as the current library and the community center space that's under the library. So today, for instance, I had a meeting with the library director. And I just said globally, is there any need for the library to utilize space in the lower level of the library? I need to have that information. To know if there's a demand for that space if the community center was to leave. Or if the community center space was available for an alternative to support the needs of the community center. So we're taking that step. I'm not designing anything for the library. Not designing anything for the existing senior center space. But I am going to inquire if those spaces are desired for other uses on the housing authority or from the library. Where those current functions are now residing. So that, that's my intent. That's what's outlined within the agreement. We've dated this agreement January 10th, just because that's when I really started my meetings, about six and a half hours into working on this. And I gave a timeline of about four months. I hope to do it sooner.
Can we shorten that timeline a little bit?
Hope to do it sooner. But it takes the availability of the subcommittee, the availability of people to get information from. So far, they've been very receptive, and we've had two meetings. We have two more scheduled. We're making, I think, good progress. And I think the subcommittee understands the assignment just as well as I, I do. And we've been making progress in our conversations.
That's good. That's great to hear, and seems to make sense. And I assume you're also taking in, you mentioned the community center, the library, and of course, the senior center would be part of that discussion of what, what goes on there. Which could remain.
And I don't have any preconceived notions of what the study, the outcome of.
Yeah, yeah.
I think if you're going to do this and invest money wisely, you have to address needs.
Right.
So we're not coming at it from a financial statement right now. We're coming up, what are the needs? And why are those the needs?
And what, but we, so we have the statement of need from before. So we're redoing the whole thing again?
Starting from scratch.
Does it seem like a waste of time or what? It seems like we're going, we're going backwards and doing a whole new statement of needs when we have it all written already. I, I'm just, you know. Maybe it's not, but it just seems like we're redoing the same job.
Jen can answer that better than I can, but, but the subcommittee has expressed to me already that the solution that was presented before went beyond their statement of need.
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, what do you, yeah, what do you think, Jen? Please tell me.
Way we're doing it now is a completely different approach, approach how we did it before. We didn't work with an architect before until the statement of needs were done.
Oh, right, yes.
It was just staff and the commissions kind of putting stuff together. We've never written a statement of needs. We had no idea, you know, we took the square footage of what our rooms were and and guessed on what that was, whereas what I really like about Brian not telling us what, we're not telling him square footage. We're telling him what our needs are, and then he's establishing it, so it's a totally different approach.
Yeah, that's good.
I think it's benefiting us.
Yeah, no, it sounds good, yeah.
He's challenging us. Okay, you say you need this, well, tell me why. And he's sitting across from table us and making a public explanation.
No, that's, yeah, that's, that sounds good, yeah, yeah.
Jen, are they including Pistol Creek as an alternative site?
We haven't even gotten to alternates of sites. That's going to be more at the end with Brian on a, once we come up with what we are doing. The problem is, we do have to think about everything that we do do at Pistol Creek and where another location for those would be. Right now, there is no other location for the holiday distribution drive for social news services and the summer camp.
Thank you.
I just want a question for you, Jen. I know that you had mentioned that, you know, about four months to do it. Maybe about, you know, halfway through, can we get another update to see where you're at and, you know, update the mayor and the council here to see where we're at with that project?
And would that include, so, you know, there's another option out there with the YMCA that's out there, and we're going to have them come to the council probably in February for a presentation? Just on what services they provide, just in general, not, you know, specific. So how, how does that fit into, so you're looking at the library, the old community center, the one in the library, looking at the senior center. A Y gets built in town, does that cover, you know, I mean, just how does, would that fit in? Out of curiosity?
My agreement is aligned with the conversation with the Y.
Gotcha, yeah, okay.
So we're going to provide you information, what you do with it.
Yeah. What we need, how do we accomplish it?
It's not a conversation that I'm going to.
Yeah, okay.
Part of at this point.
Yeah, makes sense, okay. Just wondered. I mean, obviously, if there's another facility built, it could accomplish some of the needs that we want.
Once you have the statement of need, then the Y can better evaluate.
Yeah.
How they can satisfy those needs, and if it aligns with their mission.
Yeah, all right, that makes sense. That's good. That sounds great, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, that's good. Sounds good, yeah. Yeah. That's a big plus, yes.
I was going to ask, do you live in town?
Yeah.
I've lived in town for 40 years.
Yeah, that's a big plus.
It is.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Graduated Berlin High School.
That's why when we heard your name, we were excited that you were the guy.
I'm excited too.
Yeah, good. We appreciate that, yeah.
He knows all our sins.
He learned, yeah, maybe he knows too much, but that's okay. We can talk about.
Don't mind.
Yeah, I don't need to. That's good. That sounds great. Yeah, good, right? You guys happy with that? We're all happy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian, yes. All right, good.
Okay. Good with the item six.
Yeah, great.
Then item number seven.
Now, now you're going to make it more difficult, okay.
This is a fun one. It's a.
Yeah, it's a fun one, all right.
You.
It's not too bad.
About the East Berlin Pool and what to do with it, so.
What to do with it?
Jen and Steve both together.
So.
Yeah, team effort, that's great. Oh, let's make it three. Come on, let's all come up here.
So let me just start by saying that this is the, you know, over the last few years, we really focused on this pool, and I am not a Berlin resident, but I understand that there's history with this pool, and I understand it's not a popular decision when we closed it last year. We had our reasons, we felt supported with what we did, but this is not decisions that are coming lightly. This is months and months of listening to the public, listening to the residents, talking as a commission, talking as a staff, so. Wanted to make sure everybody understood that. So Donna from Parks and Rec Commission came to you end of November, beginning of December. On behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission, which had closed, had voted at their November meeting to close the DeMore Dinda Bittner Jr. Memorial Pool in East Berlin. She came here looking for the support to have you guys vote on that and agree with them, as well as looking for support for a feasibility study that's going to look at the whole area. You guys had tabled it. You wanted more information on the feasibility study. So Steve and I went out and got that, and that's where he's going to take over and kind of walk you through that.
Great.
Perfect. So we reached out to KBA, who we've had great, successful projects with. They did the renovation of Schalise. The renovation of Sage One, and also at the same time, they just did Biscoglio. From grass to synthetic turf. So we feel, I feel we have a great working relationship with them. They kind of understand the town's needs, which I think they did. So we met Luke on site. We kind of went over the facility of what we were looking at. We started at the building that was constructed in 1980s, we'll say. Pool that was constructed in 1980s, and the open parcel of land, and then adjacent to that would be the pickleball courts, or the currently the tennis courts that have been converted into pickleball courts with some portable nets. And he looked all that. He came back with an estimate of about 28.5. We put the feasibility study together. And the feasibility study would also include, not saying we're going down this road, but to remediate or renovate East Berlin Pool. And the reason we put to renovate East Berlin Pool in there is because if somebody asked us, how much would it have cost? We wanted to make sure we gave you a solid number. We weren't just grabbing something out of the sky. So if we did go with a splash pad, a splash pad could be open for eight months, where a public pool right about now is open for anywhere from six to eight weeks. So we would get a ton more use out of that. The biggest thing is, could we tie the splash pad into existing area? Being able to utilize the current building and just upgrade that with some ADA requirements. We also wanted to make sure there was enough utilities onsite and on premises. We know we have city sewer, city water coming down. We have a generator that currently, I don't know, generator, transformer that currently has enough power, and we could tie into the building, come out of there with a lot of the components. The storage tank that's there currently now, that would pump the water into the city sewer, so it actually would really work well for us for everything. But we just wanted to make sure we got you guys all the information, could answer all the questions with the feasibility study.
Yeah, I mean, what do we think, folks? Yeah.
And.
Makes sense, yeah.
Just one, one other thing regarding that is Jim Mahoney is on board. I know that he was looking for a possible grant and applying for the steep grant, and I can let him speak to that.
Okay.
Just, you know, refreshing everybody's memory, we did talk about the steep grant match issue. We didn't put it in the appropriation. We expect that as there'll be another steep grant round in the summer. Maximum grant is 500,000. Based on, you know, they're not requiring a match, but they're recommending a 20% match, and based on the grant awards. I would strongly recommend that we plan on that. So what would require, if we pursue that as a funding source for this project. It would require, you know, a $100,000 match, which, as we discussed. You know, would need to be probably part of, part of the 25 budget. So that it would be available to commit to this right, right at the beginning of the fiscal year, when we expect the grant applications to be solicited. And, you know, as, as I said, I think when we talked about it before, if we were going to go with this project for the, you know, the steep grant, if that's not the direction we thought. Then we might need to, you know, allocate money like $25,000 for, you know, the similar feasibility and, and cost estimating work that we're doing here. But as long as, you know, as long as people are comfortable with that direction, then, then we'll just proceed with that idea in mind, subject, of course, to subsequent approvals. And the results of the study.
Yeah. Oops, oops.
I'm going to take it down to. And just so you know, funding for the feasibility study, because the motion is to close the pool, but also to kind of show us that you're going to support the feasibility study. We can't ask for funding yet because per charter, we can't transfer those funds to April 1st. But we do have the funds available from the savings in the Parks and Recreation Department budget from closing the pool July, August 2023. We just can't. So we'll be back here at last meeting in March requesting to transfer those funds into this account to do that study.
So the closing of the pool, that's for this year only, correct?
Once we look at the feasibility study, but I mean, the, the commission, the park, we support the Parks and Rec Commission to close it permanently. And look at other ideas that we can access more year round and.
So what are we doing for 2024 then? Are we going to have, we going to have a vote on that to close it permanently, or are we going to have a vote on it just to close it for this year?
The Parks and Rec Commission, do you want to?
Yeah, I was going to say.
So what, this is just a suggestion. I think that the fact that we're going to go out and show you what the cost is to fix the pool and the decking all around. Perhaps what you'd want to do is allow us to close the pool for this year. We're not going to be in a position to open it up, quite frankly. I did come before and ask that it permanently closes, we discussed, and that's the thought. But, you know, credit to Jen and Steve for thinking about, well, let's, let's get a cost anyway. So that people understand the difference and you understand the workload. So I'd ask you to vote, close the pool. It doesn't say 2024, I think in the motion, but you could amend it perhaps. Close it for 2024, then we'll come back to you when we have the feasibility study completed. And, you know, you'll have options, and then we go with, you know, with what you want to do with that.
I think that would.
We'll have our recommendation.
Right, I think that would be the way to go. I mean, there's a lot of people that I have spoken to, and, you know, they're, you know. They want that pool open, bottom line, but again, you have to have the facts to support what, what, you know, the budget's going to support to fix that pool also. So, but based on what you were saying now, is that you do the feasibility study. We then vote to close the pool for 2024, and then after we get the information, then we make a permanent decision.
Right, right, yes, I'm in agreement.
I like that, Mark. A decision on facts, that's, that's, that's good. We like, we like to do that, and glad you're on that. Decision on facts is always good. Yes, it's excellent.
The one thing I'll just mention, really, so you can get the details, starts, it says, you know, start September, like 24. I think, you know, we might, we'd like to move that up to May, once you guys approve the transfer of the funds and the Board of Finance agrees. So that it fits in Woody's schedule, but I think that's just a technicality.
I think, I think that would be the way to go then, and that would answer a lot of the unanswered questions that a lot of the residents have about that.
Yeah, you'll have a number.
Yep. I think that's, that's the way to go, because I mean, to fix the pool, I mean, if it's an outrageous amount of money, and you know, you, you know, it's not going to be feasible, then you know, we have to pick our options and make the best decision for the
Right.
Town of Berlin, then the residents of Berlin.
Right, and, you know, as we talked before, we do have declining attendance, that pool. You know, over the last several years, and, and then, you know, kind of thinking forward in a vision. Even Charlie brought it up, you know. We have Percival. Percival's going to need some work at some point, but, you know, there are options out there, and we're actually because of the senior community center project that we have going, you know, we're actually talking to other communities, visiting other communities with options that they have, Cheshire being one. That is pretty exciting, so, anyway, just.
Thank you.
Anything else? Questions? So, yeah, no, I think that all makes sense, definitely. You know, we do need a lot of information before we make these decisions, and that's good. We're working towards getting that, so. That's great.
I can amend the motion?
Yes, let's amend the motion to, to what was just discussed. That would make sense.
Move to close the, I mean, the More Dinda Bittner Jr. Memorial Pool for the 2024 season and work towards remediation of that area.
Second, all right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Right, so moved. All right, so we're good?
Thank you.
Everybody's, everybody's happy right now? Right now, anyway, that's good. Yeah, we did, yeah, something's not right, yeah, wait a minute, people can't be happy. No, we're good. Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it.
Agenda item number eight. Since we have two new members, and also as a refresher to all the council members. Tony Dinafo is going to talk about executive session and confidentiality.
So as you know, the one thing that all public agencies in Connecticut have in common. Whether they're town council, whether they're land use boards, building committees, subcommittees. Is you're all public agencies for FOIA purposes. So under the Freedom of Information Act. Individual board, commission, committee members don't have any power. You get your authority when you meet as a quorum of a public agency at a properly noticed meeting. And under FOIA, meetings of public agencies are public meetings that are open to the public unless you meet an executive session. So executive sessions are meetings, but they're meetings at which the public is excluded. So when we're going to have an executive session, we either include it on the agenda, and we identify one of the statutory reasons for the executive session. Or at a regular meeting where you Or at a regular meeting where you can amend the agenda, you can, upon two-thirds vote. Add the executive session to the agenda if it's for a proper purpose. And then upon two-thirds vote, convene an executive session. At special meetings. At which you don't have an executive session on the agenda, you can't add one because you can't amend an agenda at a special meeting. So the statutory reasons for going into executive session, the proper purposes, there's basically four plus a catch-all. Okay, the first one is to discuss hiring, firing. Or discuss the performance of a public employee. So anybody that's a W-two employee of the town. You can meet an executive session to discuss their performance. You can meet to discuss whether you wanna hire them, whether you wanna fire them. The only little twist to that is for that particular category of executive session. The public employee is entitled to know that you're going to be talking about them in executive session. And the public employee has a right to require you to do it in public. So if you say you're gonna have an executive session to discuss the employment of the town manager. And the town manager says, well, I want it to be in public. Then you have to have your discussion in public. The second proper purpose for an executive session is strategy. And negotiations with respect to a pending claim or litigation in which the town or any of its agencies is a party. You have a right, absolute right, as we've done multiple times, including. With respect to tax appeals, zoning appeals, other types of litigation. To discuss strategy, potential settlement negotiations in executive session. The third, which we really haven't had a chance to use. Frequently at the town council, but for example, the Board of Ed would use, concerns security. Whether it's security strategy, whether it's security equipment. Any matters concerning deployment of security personnel, devices affecting public security, you can discuss in executive session. And the last specific category has to do with the selection of a real estate site. Whether it's for lease, for purchase, for sale. If you determine that publicity or public discussion concerning. That site lease or potential sale or purchase would undermine your negotiating perspective. And then there's a catch-all. And the catch-all is discussion of any matter which would result in the disclosure of public information. That's protected under one-two-ten-B. So one-two-ten-B, Connecticut General Statute one-dash-two-ten-B. Is the portion of the act that lists. A few dozen exclusions. And there's different types of information that do not have to be disclosed under the act. For example, preliminary drafts. Or, or information concerning public bidding until the bid is awarded. So if you wanted to have an executive session, talk about something that's excluded from disclosure. Under one-two-ten-B, you can do that. Other than those five areas, there's no other proper purpose for an executive session. And like I said, if you wanna go into executive session, has to be on the agenda. And you have to, by a two-thirds vote, convene an executive session. You identify in the motion, the purpose of the executive session. And you also invite anyone that's not on the public agency. So if you wanted staff, any of us to be involved in the executive session, you have to state that in the motion. And then attendance at the executive session is limited to the members of the public agency and anybody that you specifically invite, invite to attend. Everything that's talked about in the executive session is confidential forever. And the reason why it's confidential forever is pretty basic, okay? Like I said, every meeting of a public agency is a public meeting. At which the public is invited to attend. An executive session is a meeting at which the public is excluded. The reason why the public is excluded and the reason for the existence of an executive session. Is back in the nineteen seventies, when the Freedom of Information Act was codified by the legislature. They balanced the interest of the public with the interest of government. In protecting the public with respect to these categories. A determination was made that the government needs to be able to have confidential communications. Regarding these matters for somewhat obvious reasons, right? So the entire discussion's confidential. Nothing discussed in executive session may be disclosed to anyone who is not in the executive session. Because if you breach that confidentiality, what you're doing is picking and choosing members of the public. That are gonna be privy to information that was expressly and intentionally excluded from the public at large. So that's the reason for the confidentiality requirement. I mean, that's, you know, there's no gray to it. If you breach confidentiality, undermine the integrity of the executive session and potentially jeopardize. The legitimacy of the executive session if someone were to file a complaint with the FOIC. Claiming that an executive session was held, but someone or multiple members of the public agency. Disclose to folks that weren't in the executive session what was discussed. Therefore, I claim that was an illegal executive session and illegal meeting, and I want the FOIC to. Impose one of the penalties by statute that they have jurisdiction to impose. So that's, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty basic. And again. There are non-meetings as well, non-meetings, so it's not a public meeting and therefore there's no executive session. Interviewing candidates for senior management. Is considered a non-meeting. So if you're interviewing candidates for superintendent of schools, if you're interviewing candidates for town manager. Those are non-meetings. They don't have to be posted as meetings. You don't go into executive session. Even though you have a quorum of a public agency, it's a non-meeting. A caucus, which is only the Republican members of the council. Or only the Democratic members of the council. Meeting to talk about whatever you want is not a meeting. Doesn't get noticed. You can do it as frequently as you want. The only thing to be careful with is you can't have anyone from outside the caucus attend the caucus. Because then it becomes an illegal meeting, regardless of whether it's a quorum or not. It's an illegal meeting if you have somebody, because you're relying on the caucus exception. And declaring it to be a non-meeting. So if you have someone who's, you know, let's say you invite me to your caucus, right? Then that causes it to not be a caucus. Because members outside of one party of that public agency are in the room. And you lose the caucus exemption to it being a meeting. And, you know, once again, you expose the entire public agency to an FOI complaint. Any questions?
Questions? Just.
We're sitting, three of us are sitting down at a club and we're discussing business. And someone is sitting there, is that an illegal caucus?
Someone else from the town council?
Yeah. Well, not the town council, just, you know, from the town committee or whoever.
If they're at the table with you, that's an illegal meeting.
Next mate, next table?
That's okay. If it's a chance, so, if it's a chance social gathering, it's okay.
Yeah.
If you invite them, if you say, we're gonna have a caucus, six o'clock at the club. Meet us, but you have them sit at the other table, that doesn't work.
Okay. No, but.
If, if you're there and they happen to be there at another table, that's fine.
Yeah.
You can't say, hey, come on over and join our discussion about.
Right.
And the whole idea is.
The basic concept behind the sunshine law, behind FOIA, right, came out of Watergate. People should know when the people's business is being done, it shouldn't be done in the light of day. However, the legislature recognizes that public agencies are made up of people from political parties. Especially elected public agencies. And you have to have the ability to caucus. Without fear of revealing strategy or compromising, you know, your position on, on an issue. So you're allowed to do that, but again, once you have somebody who's not in your caucus come in. Then the purpose behind the exemption goes away and you get into illegal meeting territory.
Anything else? We good? Okay, thank, thank you, Josh. Appreciate that. Okay. Onto appointments. Yes, we're here, two appointments. Okay, oh my goodness, all right, well. See how this goes, right?
You did receive two more applications.
Yes.
Today.
Yeah.
I want you to just be aware, I did send it to you in an email that the Golf Commission. William Richards is on the senior men's club. So.
Yeah, so what, yeah, what is?
All right, so it does fit in better with.
Okay, with what we want, yeah.
Somebody else who's on the men's club.
Right.
So this is something I really, I talked to my staff about, Rose brought it to my attention. We really have to be very cautious of the Golf Course Commission because. In the ordinance, it does say you have to have these certain clubs represented. So what we also have done is on the appointments. If somebody clicks on that on the website, we have a special application for the Golf Course Commission. For people to identify what club they belong to. All right, so going forward, I just wanted to make sure it's on your radar. We'll manage it in my office and that whole bit, but you do have the ability, of course, to reappoint Mr. Richards. You do have an appointment, an application, I should say, for. LeBree.
Yeah.
If you wanted to put him on, you can. And then you would have to put on somebody who is a non-golfer for the second vacancy.
And we don't have anybody?
Not yet, no.
We don't have anybody yet, right?
Yes, all right.
Okay.
And then the other one I wanted to just point out, because you don't have to make that second appointment for the golf commission tonight. If you don't want to, you can wait on that. But. Many Tubbs submitted his application, and I think we all know how valuable he is on ZVA. So. I think Maureen would cry if you don't point him. All right, but anyway, you can go through the list and I can identify anything that you need.
Good, yeah, don't go anywhere, Kate.
Nope.
No, we're not letting you go anywhere.
I understand.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so I guess we'll start at the beginning here. So the first one, the Berlin Pecumoral Library Board, we have Donna Moore. So we could take a nomination, right?
Yes.
To.
I'd like to nominate Donna Moore for the library board.
All right, take your second on that? Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, all right, so moved, so welcome back, Donna. All right.
You can then skip down to the Board of Ethics.
Ethics, so, yeah, let me just, so, there's not, so we have two other openings there, Kate? Is that on the, on the library board?
Right now. More for the library board, yes.
That we don't have anybody.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I have spoken to, they have some patrons that they will reach out to.
Oh, okay, good.
And then at that point, you can seat them if you want to.
Yeah, all right, that's good. So Board of Ethics. So.
Nominate Deborah Reed.
Take your second on that? Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved? Second Board of Ethics nomination. Let's.
But there's only one, just one.
Only one vacancy, right?
There's only one vacancy for Board.
Oh, oh, I thought, I thought she was moving up from an alternate spot.
Once she, so once she moves up, then we, then create.
We could do it next time?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, 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 that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
That's all right, we haven't done it for a year.
Yeah. That's why you're here, Kate. That's the whole reason why you're here, yes. So we'll save him for later. So we are the central.
Your next one would be Central Regional Tourist District.
Yep. Okay, so we have a nomination there.
Have to be a, have to be a Brooklyn resident to serve on the commission?
No, because I was on it before.
That's right, you were there, Kate. Okay? Yeah.
I'll nominate Mr. Chris Edge.
Okay, thank you on that. Second, we're good. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, so, so moved? Commission on the Aging, what do we have here? Got, what do we have here, Kate? Two, right? And two spots, right? Kate, we're good?
Yep.
So we'll go ahead and make, take a motion for Mr. Moss.
Nominate Mr. Roger Moss.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none, close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved? And we have another one for the Commission on the Aging. We'll take a nomination.
Mr. Frank Sluggers.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none, oh, second, any second, yeah.
You don't really need a second for a nomination, so it's okay.
Oh, we do or we don't?
We don't? We don't? Oh, well, good, that saves a step. That's good. No, that, yeah, move along, move along. Okay, so nominations are closed. All those in favor, Frank?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, all right, so moved? So before we, so Commission on the Aging here, Kate, we have three, right?
Yes.
And there's three good candidates too, but there's only two openings, right, at this point?
So.
What, yeah, what?
Winston has already been on, so, you know, for him to be, it's up to you if you wanna reappoint him.
Yeah.
He was formerly on the Board of Ethics. I have worked with him.
Okay.
But he's an attorney.
Okay.
Say that he brings a lot to the table.
Okay.
And, not just a Christian attorney, but he does bring, he, he's very well-balanced.
Yeah, and he's been there, right? He's been there for.
He just got on, I think, last year.
Oh, last year, okay, okay. That, I mean, I'm, I'm glad we have, it's great, because a lot of times that commission, we've. Wanted folks to apply and we haven't had them, so that's good to have three. I feel bad when you can't make it, but maybe we can. Reach out to whoever we don't. Vote on and, and see if they want something else, right? We can always do that, I guess. So, let, let's take a motion for. Yes. Nomination.
I nominate Mr. Winston Ackerman.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved? And I would, I think Nicholas.
Ackerman.
Nicholas Gerard. Yeah. I think he has. Yeah, I mean, he's got a great background with Connecticut Department of Development Services, so. Yeah, so we'll take a nomination for this.
We're gonna go get Derek.
Yes.
I nominate Mr. Nicholas Gerard.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none, close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, so moved? So we'll, we, maybe we could get, I feel bad, we don't have one for Derek, but.
Well, maybe he'd help us with the aging or something.
Yeah, maybe we can reach out to him and see if we could. Do something, so. Yeah, we'll hold that. Let's see here. Those over here. Okay. So where are we? Conservation Commission?
Yeah.
Is that where we're at now?
And these are two reappointments, if that's what you wanna do.
Yes, so we'll go ahead and take a.
We're gonna nominate Mr. Guy Hoffman for Conservation Commission.
Yes, thank you for that nomination. Any other nominations for this slot? Hearing none, nominations closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved, and. Second nomination here.
I'd like to nominate Mary Catherine LaRose. For the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none, all those in. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So we're moved on that.
The next two, the councilables have been councilables prior.
Right.
They work very well with the
Good.
Revenue Department. Debbie's very pleased with them and I would recommend at least these two being reappointed. You will have five vacancies going forward.
Yeah.
There's been some vacancies here all along, but
Right.
at least these two have been working very well with the Revenue Department.
It's been, you know, back in the day, there seemed to be a lot of folks that wanted that and then it kind of drifted away somewhere, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of a popular thing, but anyway, we got a couple that worked well. Yeah, I know Mr. Kozak, he's a great guy, too, so it's all good, I think, and great to hear that, Kate, they're working well. So we'll go ahead and take a nomination for Mr. Kozak.
I nominate Mr. John Kozak for Constable.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved, and nomination for Mr. Brian.
I nominate Brian Kuznick or Nick, sorry.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So moved on that. Okay, where are we at, Kate? What do we have here now? Economic Development. Alright, so we have two, or two, I think, we got two spots, so we're good.
So both of these are also reappointments.
Okay.
We're comfortable with them remaining. Um, I know they both seem to contribute a lot to EDC.
Yes, agreed. So we'll take a nomination for Keith Basstrom.
I nominate Mr. Keith Basstrom.
Thank you. Any nominations for this position? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved, and next one for EDC.
I nominate Mr. Robert Sisti.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. So, okay, so economic, yeah, he, he's a reappointment, right? Is he on there?
Was that?
So we're at.
There's no other openings for EDC.
Right. Oh, okay. Oh, he's here, but he's late, he's later, isn't he? Well, he wants, yeah.
He's on ZVA.
Yes, right.
He also put it in for economic.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. So when we get down to ZVA, we look at that, okay. Is that later, or is this the only one we have for that? Do we have him later in the package, or we'll just remember?
For EDC.
ZVA, yeah.
I think the one for ZVA would be
Later on.
And I think he, he would be reappointed, yes.
Who?
It'll be the two of them.
The two of them? Are, 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 there's two spots, or just, oh, there is? Oh, okay. Alright, so bring us to the Golf Commission. So what, what are we, the Golf Commission, okay.
You could reappoint Mr. Richard. And then if you wanted to wait, you could, or you could appoint Mr. Richard and then for the opening that is there, you have a couple of them, really. You can put in Mr. Libri, Libree.
Okay. Libree, yeah. And so there's another one, right? Or was there two?
At this point, one reappointment and two vacancies.
Oh, there's two, oh, so and we just have. Alright, so we have one for that other position?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, okay, alright, so we'll go ahead and take a.
Nominate Mr. William Richards for Golf Commission, reappointment.
Thank you. Any other, any other nominations for that position? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. And Mr. Labrie. So we can nominate Robert Labrie.
I nominate Mr. Robert Labrie for the Golf Commission.
Yes, thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Labrie. So, and you said there's still an opening for a non-club member, right?
Yeah.
Of any club? Okay, so, so we'll have to.
So what I have done is the Golf Course Commission was made well aware of that email that also went out to you. Alright, and that, and there, I explained the ordinance and also, you know, who you needed to have on the commissions and things along those lines. So they are, I think, looking forward to maybe talking to some of the other golfers or talking to other people and everything, because they do need a non-golfer
Right.
on that commission. And hopefully, they will be able to talk to some of their friends and see if somebody will participate in that commission.
Yeah, like, I just, I mean, someone that's not in the, any clubs.
Right.
I mean, a golfer, maybe, or anybody.
A non-golfer.
It could be anybody, right? Pretty much.
The intent was to have a resident who is not affiliated with golf.
Yes, I.
That
Right.
getting strike a balance when they make decisions.
I think that's a good thing. Right?
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's good to get a different point of view. I want that. Okay, where are we at here? The Historic District?
Right. And that would need to rein with the reappointment.
Yes, so let's take a nomination.
I nominate Lorraine Stubbs for the Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. It wouldn't be the Historic Commission without Lorraine.
Yeah.
Brings an awful lot.
Oh, my goodness, yes, oh, yes, absolutely.
A lot of history.
Sad about it. So on the inland wetlands, so we're good, right, Kate, with?
So your three for, would be all reappointments?
Okay.
On 23 to 29.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so we'll go ahead and take a nomination for the first one, Michael Cusada.
I nominate Michael Cusada for inland wetlands commission.
Alright, thank you. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. Second one.
Mr. Peter Nigman for inland wetlands commission.
Yes, thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved, and nominations for the third inland wetlands.
Mr. John Russo Jr.
Thank you. Any other nominations for, for this position? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. Okay.
Alternatives positions are open. They have been open for a while.
So they got alternates on that? Okay.
And then for Madabassett, James Fallon is not likely to be appointed, so that's an open.
So that's open, okay, Madabassett's open.
Then you can go into Park and Rec. Now, the Park and Rec Commission, I, this is where we kind of get a little okay, what you have here is a vacancy. The vacancy has to be filled first. That vacancy will expire in 2026. The three people that have put their applications in have all been on the Park and Rec.
Okay.
They all expect to stay on until 2027.
Okay.
But one of them will not. They'll stay on until 2026. At that point, whoever's on the council can reappoint them. Alright, so.
Okay.
It's always a touchy thing. You have to fill vacancies first.
Okay, so.
Who's been on the longest?
Or who has the best attendance?
Yeah.
Either one, yeah, either one. What's the attendance sheet? It's in here. Park and Rec?
Yeah, it's right here.
Well, they all have 100% attendance, so that doesn't do it.
Can't weed them out that way.
Who's, who's been on the longest, do you know?
I don't know, it's probably Donna.
Probably, yeah. So we shouldn't put her in a 26.
You know, she does so mu, she's been the chair. I think everybody's fine with her.
Right.
You know? So
And.
I think, you know, either one, I think it's going to be a, I mean, it can, the person can always be reappointed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't have term limits on this commission, but I just want you to be sensitive to that, because
Alright.
I mean, if it doesn't really matter, I would just say, take the next one and
Yeah.
you know, just kind of do it in order. Whoever happens to be next, make them the 26 one and.
Yeah. Is that the, so that would be the last? The first two would be the 20 to 20, 27?
So number.
Like number 30 would become 29.
Vacancy. 29 is to fill a vacancy.
Yeah.
That would be on until 2026.
Okay.
And then the regular positions with they're all up for would go until 2027.
So maybe the application that was submitted the last?
I mean, if you wanted to, you could.
I don't.
Mini, mini, miney, mouse. Submitted last 11:20 at 12:42.
There you go, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can reappoint them, so I'm not, yeah, we're not, we're not doing anybody.
I just want you to be aware of it.
Yeah.
Cause issues.
No, no. Yeah, I mean, there's no way they're all doing a good job, as far as we all know, so, yeah, I mean, that's why it's hard, but, yeah, alright, so we can, we can take that. So.
As the last, as the last one in.
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and again, he could be reappointed, so that's good. So go ahead, so we'll go ahead and.
Nominate Gregory Star. Star.
Well, is he the last one in, or?
No, Lucas.
Don't we need Lucas first, or no?
Lucas should go first.
That's for the, yeah, Lucas should be first, yes.
Yeah.
So let's, we'll retract that one and we'll do Lucas Van Zant. Excuse me.
So I nominate Mr. Lucas Van Zant for his position.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. And now we can do, the next one would be Greg, we'll do Gregory.
I nominate Mr. Gregory Star.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. And finally?
I nominate Mrs. Donna Bovie.
Alright, thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. Okay, thank you, Kate, so where do we at?
As far as the cable TV that's been open for.
Ha, forever?
On the cable.
Okay. Yeah, there you go.
On the cloud.
So you're going to get into planning and zoning at that point?
Yes. Planning and zoning.
So the first two with Diane Jorski and Timothy Zigmont, they have both been on.
Yeah.
They are seeking reappointment.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. There is two more applications in here. Kristen.
So.
And then also with Michael. And then there's also John, it's open for reappointment, but well, either a regular member or then alternate.
So we have, how many?
Two for regular.
There's only two regular spots open?
Right.
Then the other two are eight, are alternate.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
Well, we only have two applications, right?
You do have Diane Jorski, he would be a reappointment, and so would Tim Zigmont. Want to put those two in first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you can talk about the alternate.
Yep. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so let's do those two.
Okay, I nominate Diane.
Of course.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved, alright, and that.
I nominate Mr. Timothy Zigmont for the other positions.
Yeah. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none. Close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright, so moved. Okay, so.
So number 36 is a vacancy. So the term would only be until 2026.
26.
Right? And that was the one that Nikki
Yeah.
So you could pick one of the, one of the three to fill the vacancy.
Yeah.
John was an alternate.
Yeah.
He wants to continue as, at least as an alternate, or you can you already filled the regular positions.
Right.
But you do have two new applications for the alternate positions. And then John, if you wanted to put him back on for the full term, would be number 37.
Oh, I see, oh, 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 okay, okay, so the John.
John wants to still be an alternate, right?
But I'm on.
Yeah, I think he would love to go on as a full.
Yeah.
It's not a spot, yeah.
Not a spot now, okay, so for one, so for that, 2026 one?
Yeah, so number 26, you would need to fill it with either Michael or with this Kristen.
We can make a nomination for that.
I nominate Michael Hasak.
I think that's it. Yes, for this.
I apologize if I butchered anybody's name.
Nah, to butcher names tonight, left and right, it's like that.
Before you do that, I just double check something.
Hmm?
Cause you've got minority records, so it's.
We're actually almost at the end of this? Well, we're pretty close. That's pretty impressive.
So, yes, you can do that, all right? And the reason why you can do it, I had a look at the third alternate, and a third alternate is, um, Stephen Bella, and he's an unaffiliated, so you can put on two Republican and alternate.
All right.
You can visit, he is.
Okay, we, we know it's, we know it's not, that's why we're happy you're here, believe me.
Michael on.
Yes, all right, thank you.
vacancy position.
All right, uh, so.
Does that mean there would be no position for Kristen?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, but look at Kristen's number four.
At the moment. For four.
Question, answer to question number four?
For number three and number four.
Comprehensive.
Yeah. Yeah.
Put his name for the essay.
DOT.
Or. Is there, what, what? Oh.
Forgive me, but the DOT makes me skeptical.
And I'm also looking at the time in Berlin, too, eight months versus twenty-five years.
Yeah, that's true.
I was looking at that, too, I mean.
And hopefully he'll reapply an extra.
Maybe the next vacancy or something, we can, we can look for that one as an alternate. That's just. I mean, there's no current or past involvement either, right?
Correct.
He's not done anything else, Mr. Michael.
Right. No.
Not even gonna try and pronounce his last name, call him Michael P.
Yeah, yeah.
Like everyone will understand.
Uh, what's he work? Energy, uh, construction representative, bachelor of science manufacturing.
He certainly knows the culture of.
Planning and zoning right away, it's, it's structural management.
Well, and he's used to dealing with planning and zoning.
Absolutely.
I don't want to discourage anybody from volunteering.
Right.
Yeah, but.
I don't want to discourage anybody from volunteering.
No, 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 no.
Appreciate all our efforts.
Of course.
I agree.
He did Pazchuk, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So, well, we, he's now, right, so we're, we're, uh, any other nominations? Hearing none? We'll close it, all those, uh, in favor for Michael?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Me.
All right, so moved, thank you, and, um, nomination for Mr. Dyken?
Uh, I nominate Mr. Dyken for planning and zoning.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations for this position? Hearing none? Uh, close nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved. And maybe we can ask Christian if he wants something else, too, and I, I, there's people, I, I'm gonna put him in, we have the pie, I have a pile here for people that.
Inland Wetlands, right, has.
Oh, yeah, well, there, there, there we go.
Appropriate for him.
I agree, let's do it.
It's a good move.
A good idea.
So, we can just, Kate, who, who reaches out, would, would you send something to him and say, he, he?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing else to do.
Would you?
Would you, pretty please?
Can you? And you know what, could you do that for, uh, I, I know.
Another one on.
Derek, yeah, cause I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, we got other vacancies, so let's.
Yep.
Do what we gotta do.
Now.
Okay, that'd be good, that's great, that's better.
Building commission, you're gonna have the same situation where you have.
What is it now?
Okay.
Oh, public building.
Vacancy first.
Okay.
And then you have the two regular positions.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so what, so.
So if you put somebody, I mean, you can always wait on, you know, do it at the next meeting, but you gotta get somebody in here. So you have a vacancy because Jim resigned.
Yes, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Twenty-twenty, or he's term expired in twenty-twenty-three, and there was no one who stepped forward to fill that position. So.
Okay.
That is gonna be a shorter.
With.
By one year.
By one year?
It'll be by one year.
Yeah, I mean.
Be the same thing.
Whoever it is, we could reappoint them, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if that.
But we only have two applications.
Two for two, right? So we got two spots.
We got three spots.
Three spots, so, yeah, so, no, they're both going, it just depends, is one a year shorter, one.
Could we hold thirty-eight and do the, just reappoint their current positions?
No, you have to fill vacancies.
Yeah, we gotta do the vacancy. Um. I, you know, either one, I don't, and I mean, we could reappoint them.
Thing which everyone got their application in.
Well, yeah, we could do that, you wanna do that? I mean, I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter, I mean, I don't think it matters, they're both getting back on.
Yeah, they both came back on, just a matter of reappointment later on.
Yeah, that's all.
That's all.
All right, so it looks like, uh, Mr. Reed made it. A few days, so. He would be the other, so. Thomas would be the first one there, Kate, right? Is that, that's the one year shorter?
Yeah, that's the.
And again, well, that's only in the data, stamping them in, I don't, they're both, you know, they're both good, they've both been there, they're, you know, there's no.
It's just something to use at least.
Yeah, I don't know what else to do, I mean, we could flip a coin, you know, whatever, they're both getting back on, I'm sure they'll be back on again, so.
Yeah.
All right, so, right?
He's the current chair, right?
Uh, I see the, uh, oh, yeah, is he the current chair? Okay. So, okay, so he'll be the longer term, by year, by, by just a year, yeah, so we'll put Thomas on this first one, that's just a year shorter, but, again, you know, they.
Both Thomas?
Yeah, they're, that's, yeah, yeah, that's, not Mr. Reed.
Got it.
Salamino, yeah, sorry, yeah, that's a good point, yeah, which Thomas? Who's on first, I don't know. Um, okay, so.
Nominate Mr. Thomas Salamino.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? Close nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved, and.
I nominate Mr. Thomas Reed for the second position on public building.
Uh, any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, and there's a, there's another opening, right, Kate?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, there's an extra opening, so. Okay, Veterans Commission, where are we at here? What do we got here?
So, on this one, of course, I, I would suppose that you would put Charles back on, but also, um.
Wouldn't be the Veterans Commission without Charles, I don't know what we would do without him, right?
That's right.
Oh, my God, yeah, but, yeah, so what, what, what's the new one?
I think wants to be reappointed.
Who does?
Adam Rivera.
Oh.
He's the next one on the list.
Okay.
But.
Is he?
I would put both back on and then just wait on the other ones, we don't have anybody for them anyway.
Did Adam submit one?
I think he wants to, I don't think he's there yet.
Oh, okay, so we'll wait on him, yeah, that's fine.
With Charlie.
Yeah, Charlie, yeah. Absolutely, okay, yeah, that's.
I nominate Mr. Calorice.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, right, so moved. All right, where are we at now?
Are we gonna go down to the V and A board?
V and A, yes, indeed. Okay, what do we got for the V and A? So, we got, uh.
Well, this is the ongoing thing with the V and A, because it's not a full board, it would be the same thing where we would be filling possibility of one person who is being reappointed with a shorter term. But you only have two applications for the V and A.
Oh, and this one, she's, uh, the chair. So.
Yeah, but they're both for twenty-twenty-six.
Oh, they both are, so it doesn't matter?
Doesn't.
Right.
It doesn't matter, okay, so, yeah, all right, that's fine, yeah, um, so.
Well.
Yeah, that's right, she's the chair, yeah, yeah.
I'll nominate Kara Strauss, Stress.
Stress, yep, yeah.
All right, uh, thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries, and.
I nominate Mr. William Burganti for the other position.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? Nominations are closed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved, and, yeah, we have a ton of vacancies on that one, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
So you're gonna drop down to number fifty-two?
Yeah.
Which would be, uh, water control.
Water control, okay. What we got here? He's on there, he's on there now?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we got a couple people, that's good, right? Do we have positions for them or no?
Three people.
Sure.
Who want to be reappointed.
Okay, good.
And they all, all reappointed, so you have Fairwood, Rustia.
Yeah.
And then last.
And they all got positions, we're all good.
Yep.
Oh, good, all right, well, that makes it easy, yeah, that's easy. Okay. Let's take it.
I nominate Mr. Barry Fairwood.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? Uh, close nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
I nominate Mr. Alvaro Garcia Junior.
Thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? Close nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, right, so moved.
I nominate Mr. Thomas Lasker for water control.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, right, so moved, and.
So then you have the alternate positions, they're all vacancies, and no one has applied, so you're gonna drop down to number fifty-eight.
Yeah.
And this is for the youth service.
Yeah.
Officer. Um, and it was Brent Kelly, he has been promoted.
Okay.
You're gonna put Kevin, um.
Chaffey?
Chaffey on, please.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
For the vacancy.
Yeah, sounds good. Take a motion.
I nominate Mr. Kevin, Detective Kevin Chaffey for the Youth Services Board.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none? Close nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Spoke. And.
The next one is Cindy McKean, position has expired, she does wanna be, no, I.
That, that's.
We don't have a vacancy, we don't have a application for that.
Okay.
This is another one that Jamie's working on, so she'll bring forth, um, with youth services, especially for the new members, um, there is certain members that have to fit according to whatever the ordinance says. All right, and then you go on to GBA.
Which we got two for two, right?
Yep, so you have, um, Lenny Tubbs has put his application in.
Okay.
All right, and then Michael would like to go back on, so.
Okay, and same position, same years, doesn't matter?
It does, one is an alternate position, one is a regular position.
Oh, and who, who's?
Lenny is regular.
Lenny's regular, right? Okay, and, and, uh, Michael's a alternate?
Yep.
Okay, so. All right, so we'll go ahead and take Lenny.
So I nominate Mr. Lenny Tubbs.
All right, thank you. Any other, uh, nominations for this position? Hearing none, close the nominations, and all those in favor, Lenny?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Uh, Martin Carries, and.
I nominate Mr. Michael Simonetta.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations for this position? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, right, so moved. Okay, oof.
Not bad.
Wow. Yeah, absolutely. We are so happy you have volunteered to, uh, you know, help us, yeah, right? Yeah, we're all happy, we all volunteered, yeah.
Something wrong with us.
Yeah, no doubt about that, Peter, no doubt about that. Um, no, that's great, you know, the town runs with these volunteers, and it's, it's, it's great, so, uh, that's, uh, that is wonderful. Yeah, we still need some more, but we got, it's quite a list this time, pretty, pretty good.
It's always tough, because it's all the reappointments.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Kate, for your assistance with, with that, without that, it would be a mess, so we appreciate what you have done, help us through this, as always, once a year, we forget, you know, what we're doing, and, uh.
So on the next council meeting, you'll have a list of anyone who we don't have people for, or whatever.
Okay.
If anybody else puts forth their application.
Yeah.
For.
Okay, excellent, okay, so that brings us to, I think it brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
That, huh?
Yeah, wow.
But I. Um, a follow-up from last meeting, Charlie, do you have the email? He said.
Oh, I didn't bring them, no, I will, I will get them to you.
Next meeting.
Or even sooner, I'll send them.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, other follow-up on the V and A, the GPS, we just got the pricing.
Yeah.
From three different courts that Jim Simon's got.
Oh.
They got various options, renting monthly fee versus geofencing, and whether you buy it and install it, so they seem all reasonable.
Oh, good.
We'll look at what's, uh, good for us, and there are five V and A vehicles that will install it.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you an update, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have it up and running.
Oh, we appreciate that.
So, that's good to go.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
So, yeah, so speaking of the V and A, um, Leah Anderson, she just turned in her resignation, the director of the V and A.
No, really?
She's, uh, he just had it.
Had enough?
I mean, she's put in twelve hour days.
Yeah.
Work home.
It's a, it's a tough job.
Emotional toll that she has taken, it's been a rough couple of years.
Yeah.
Not knowing the future of the V and A, and then also, um, it's been tough not knowing what the number is, I mean, I've asked council, I've asked the Board of Finance, like, is there a number that you're willing to, um, settle for the V and A? I mean, not nine hundred thousand.
No.
What is it? And then.
Break even, is that a number we can?
It's, it's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen, well, as it's structured now, I suppose.
It is structured now.
Yeah.
And also, the, I shared with the Westbrook V and A, you know, their best case scenario, they're about three hundred and fifty in the hole, because their benefits are not included.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are the benefits, they're breaking even.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
I know, it's a tough.
And then, again, like, this year, I'll talk about the budget later.
Yeah.
It is, and it's nothing, I, I honestly think there's nothing the V and A staff can do in terms of drumming up business.
Yeah, I know.
I'll, I'll share an example of, without mentioning names, of a Berlin resident, you know, the person, Peter, was, uh, being, um, discharged from Hartford Hospital, and she said, um, I, I want the Berlin V and A. After I said, no, you don't want the Berlin V and A, they're a mess.
Oh, that's terrible.
They're not organized, they're in total disarray, and they might not even be there.
Yeah.
So, and, and what did she do? Give me the, give me the piece of paper, I'll sign.
Oh, my goodness.
Right?
That's not right.
True story.
Well, I think we knew that was happening, though, something like that was.
So, I mean, Hartford, and it's hard to compete with Hartford and Yale and Green Health.
Yeah, it is.
And they are, they are merciless, they're, they just tell, this is the next step, you know, you're getting discharged, I find, I said, that's the best option.
Did, did, just question, did anyone reach out to Hartford and let them know that this went on so it can be addressed? Cause they're, in all honesty, they're really not supposed to do that, they can say, you know, we recommend you use Hartford Healthcare Home Care because of X, Y, and Z, but they really shouldn't be putting down another agency, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we could reach out.
Pretty bad, about as bad as you get, right?
It's like, how, how do you get hold of that?
Right.
Us reaching out to the bottom of their, you know, fall in terms of, they're suing each other right now, Hartford and San Francis and Yale.
Yeah, that's right, they are, aren't they?
Other's patients, so.
Oh, yeah.
The Berlin V and A, yeah, take an arm, they'll say. The Berlin V and A, yeah, they're going to, they'll say.
Little bit of a mess, huh?
So, um.
That's, that's terrible.
We fortunately have.
We're up against.
An RN who can be the clinical supervisor. Department of Public Health Regulations are very strict about how this is managed because their, their priority is making sure that the patients are taken care of.
Sure, as it should be.
So, uh, immediately we have a RN who can be the clinical supervisor. You have forty-eight hours, have someone in that position, so we can have her be the supervisor.
That's good.
She's already said, I am not, at any price, not taking the position of the administrator, nobody wants it.
Yeah, I know.
So it'll be a challenge for me to fill it and, um.
Oh, boy.
So we'll, we'll work on it. Um, I mean, that's all, and she just gave an notice on Friday. So, and she found a job ten minutes away from where she lives in Marlboro, in a nursing facility and, you know, she's got two young children.
Yeah.
These jobs are demanding, you know, you'll be here with young children.
I don't blame her, I mean.
And she gets called on weekends when there's no nurse, the school nurses, when they're out of control. That's the other thing, they're, they're under the V and A, she needs to intervene with that.
Right.
It, it requires meeting with the superintendent and everybody else, when the parents have complaints about the nurses, she gets pulled into that. And then all these compliance reports and, uh, everything that you have to submit.
Yeah, that's awful.
All the patients. And then.
When's she done at the end of the month?
Second of February, two, following Friday, she's done.
But at least we have the acting for now, that could, that could act, you know.
And then.
Help us.
The thing, Leah, she was supposed to come and do the whole transition, she just got diagnosed with shingles.
Oh.
She's in pain.
Oh, no.
And she's going to try and come tomorrow for a few hours, try and help me out.
Yeah.
Something, so.
Yeah, oh, that's bad, yeah, that's pain.
We know how many patients we currently have. For care.
Good, forty, something.
Forty.
That's the census, I would think, so.
Okay.
Oh.
What happens if we don't fill the position, if we can't find anyone?
Wow. It's, um, you can't go without an administrator, but you can't go without a clinical supervisor. So.
So she's the clinic, she can, yeah, like I said, she.
Needs to be an RN, so.
Yeah.
I mean, the.
Oh, boy.
Charlie, this, you know, it, it, if you don't, if you can't take care of the patients and things fall through the cracks, we're going to lose our license.
Hmm.
And then we have to shut down.
Shut us down. Yeah, that, they do, they, they, they don't care about your charter, what's in the charter and whether we have to comply or not, but that'll be a black eye. Don't think you want to, we're not trying to avoid it at all cost.
And she doesn't want us, I mean, she'll act for a while, but she'll be the acting.
Who's the?
Just for the clinical.
Who's filling in, I, who even is it?
Yeah, who's the?
Edie, Edita, she's the, she's a RN.
RN, so she's filling in for now, which we need.
Well, when. Yeah, yeah.
Clinical supervisor.
Which is what we need.
For now.
We have to have that, yeah, right, right, right. So as long as she stays there, we're good until we find somebody?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, I am, last time we had a difficult time, Leah applied for a part-time nurse position, I grabbed her resume and said, okay, this is the right person, Barbara, and I thought she's had all the.
Yeah.
Expertise and we convinced her to work full-time.
Yeah.
She's a, you know, young mother with two little children and that's enough for her.
Oh, I don't, I, listen, I don't blame her. It's, it's tough.
Yep, so, and, and she was really good, she did a lot of good stuff.
Yeah.
Automate things there, write policies and, uh.
Well.
A type personality, you know, got everything under control, so.
Yeah.
That staffing issue. We. Last meeting, we talked about Kim who's leaving.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, we.
That's horrible.
Working with the library board and all, Curry Jessica, who is the Assistant Director, who's been with us for twenty-something years.
Yeah.
She's very good, she's a quiet type, but she just, uh, work a B, she'll give you all things done. So we moved her up.
Oh, great.
That there'll be some transition.
Yeah.
And all the implementation of all the strategic plan we've done and all that.
Yeah. Oh, good.
At least there's be some continuity there.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear.
Okay, another follow-up item with Brightfeeds, the.
Yes.
Complaints with that.
Yes.
So, um, the owner has to do, this has to do with the noise. Uh, he has ordered, um, some noise dampening equipment, they must be custom-made. And they have been ordered by, you know, special order and it's expected to be installed by the end of February.
Oh.
It's some massive operations, you can't just go to Home Depot and.
No, no, understood, yeah. The residents have.
He doing that voluntarily?
Yeah.
Right, there's no requirement, he's doing it voluntarily?
A, a whole independent firm to come and measure all the noise levels.
That's great, wow.
There are these dampening devices he's going to install that he believes is going to fix the problem, so he's going to do that.
He's being a good neighbor.
He's really.
Being a good corporate citizen, huh? Yeah, more of that.
The first time I got the complaint, I just.
Yeah.
Sent him an email, next morning, he was here from New York.
Really, wow, that's impressive, yeah.
Good to hear.
Also working with, uh, the, sorry, our pollution control engineer from Deep, who has been, uh.
Oh, yeah, you're right, Deep was.
Testing for the smells. And they couldn't find anything, so they have asked for a series of reports, inputs and outputs, measurements, to see if there's any stuff that should not be released to the air that's causing the smell. And even the folks from Deep said that these guys are really good to work with.
Oh, good, oh.
Yeah, because they want this to work.
Yeah.
And they're very responsive, yeah. And even with.
That's wonderful.
Even with meeting with the neighbors, the guy who came, he was complaining about the noise, he said, I, I just want to make sure, this is not a knock against the owner of Brightfeed, they're a really good group.
Yeah.
You know, I call them and they're responsive and anytime you go in there.
Yeah.
And if the owner is not there, their plant manager will come and give you a tour.
Oh.
Walk with you and listen.
I'd like to see it, actually, it sounds like a fascinating, huh? Did you go? Oh, yeah, is it pretty interesting?
Very fascinating, yeah.
Oh, oh, I got to go.
But the opening, the commissioner was here, so they, they gave a nice tour to everyone.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I remember that, I didn't make it to that one.
He came in front of ZBA and, um, when he was first starting out and he offered to give us a tour of everything and.
Oh, I'd like to see that.
Very interesting.
We should do a road trip.
We should, yeah, we should go check it out, yeah.
And I've gone, every week I go see if there's any smell, like, obviously when you go.
And you smell, and you smell it?
It did a winter thing because it's cold, so it doesn't smell, you know what I mean?
No.
Yeah.
I, I initially thought maybe it's when the trucks are there.
Yeah.
There, there are a lot of trucks are coming in the night and they all can dump it at the same time, so does it?
Oh, are they waiting?
In the winter, you're right, it's not that smelly.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Summertime would be, yeah, it's really going to.
Would be worse, I would assume.
Well, I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll.
We'll find out, we'll find out, yeah, we'll find out.
We should have a.
We'll know.
Well, they kept, there's filters for smell too, right, I think, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, but. But anyway, that, that's, that's great to hear that he's that responsive, though, that's pretty good, you know, that's not the norm.
I'm still a little shocked that you have to custom-order a noise dampening.
Yeah, yeah.
Even exist, but.
Maybe for whatever they have.
Pretty new technologies, I imagine it has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like slapping a muffler on a.
Yeah.
Chevy, you know.
Like a humming noise, you get it.
That machine noise, that's like, yeah, constant.
Well, that's positive so far, yeah.
No, I'll keep you posted as we get updates from them.
Yeah, thank you.
Senior Housing Generator?
Yes, the Senior Housing Generator, how are we doing with that?
So, uh, radio silence from, uh, Housing Authority.
Oh, come on.
Doug's reached out to three contractors that we do business at, getting pricing quotes, I'll share, it'll take two to three weeks to.
Okay.
Then to tell, to install turnkey.
Okay.
It would be.
Okay, so we'll get a price from them?
We'll get a price and.
And we're going to just do it, I would say. We waited long enough.
Long enough.
Yes, yes, right, folks?
Sitting there.
It's long enough.
We don't need the power to go out and let.
No.
Have those people freezing all over.
Oh, my God, and we have the generator, he's had it for a year, he hasn't installed it.
Say, it's been over a year.
Yeah, that's not right.
And the fact that they're being non-responsive at this point, we just need to get it done for the senior center.
We got to get it done, that's not right. That's just wrong, okay, so whatever you get, bring it to us and.
And then, uh, I think the mayor and Donna, you were copied on this from the Gold Star Families Memorial Sign. We had a point that, uh, pricing should be coming back to us in two to three days.
Oh.
And then we're going to move forward and order the signs.
Oh, great.
Fully within a month, we can get it installed.
Oh, great.
And then concurrently, we want to apply to DOT, uh, signs on Farmington Ave because they have a saying that, that's state road.
Right.
So, uh, they'll let us know, um.
And you.
Great, yes.
Right.
Okay. And so, uh, it'd be nice to have at least the local signs done before Memorial Day.
Uh, that'd be great, oh, yeah, definitely for, yes, for Memorial Day would be nice, what do? Oh, my God, he'll be so happy, Peter.
Peter, we all love him.
Oh, we love Peter.
Took a while for us to get Peter to this point.
Yes.
One of the signs that were in Middletown and we just.
Too big, too big, yeah, yeah.
And Middletown, the DOT spices, they hate those signs.
Oh, yeah.
Some folks in Middletown got to the legislative body and they, they ordered a legislative, uh, act to put the signs.
Uh, that's how they got them?
Were wrote DOT and, so we don't want to do that.
Uh, no.
We have a good relationship with DOT.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the last thing you want to do, um.
Right, so Peter's, Peter's.
Those are good signs.
Yeah, and, and, and Peter's good now, though, with what?
He's fine.
He's fine now? Okay, good.
He's fine because.
He's such a great.
Charlie had to work.
Charlie had come to town. I mean, all for the right reasons, but, you know, I know he wants, you know, to advertise, which is great.
Be a good player.
Oh, we love them, no, we love them, but it's good. Well, yeah, we, they're all, the commission, they're amazing, yeah, they're all. That's great, good.
But it's season coming up, I have, uh, all the.
Budget, uh.
It just seems like yesterday.
It does seem like yesterday, yes, we're here again.
So.
Yeah.[1361.34]